Everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Constitution, to our nation, under our constitutional liberty and justice.
I have no sound.
The call to order that February 28th, regular business meeting of the Board of Supervisors, and for everybody, this meeting is being recorded. I want to start off with a presentation by Colleen Terry, who's the President of Econ Partners. She is going to provide to us information around a proposal to identifying funding sources and eligible products or projects within Lower Gwinnett. Colleen?
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for including me on your agenda. I appreciate that and for allowing me to be here virtually. I had a scheduling conflict, so I appreciate we're able to present this way or meet this way. Econ Partners, we are actually celebrating our 10th year this year. It'll be 10 years in April since we founded the firm. We're a small boutique, I would say, economic development consulting firm, and we are focused exclusively on public funding. So when I say public funding, I'm meaning full spectrum. So we work hand in glove with our clients, two and many of whom are municipalities, to identify priorities, generally on an annual basis, but certainly, you know, recurring throughout the year, identify those, align them with available funding sources, and then identify as other funding sources, for example, ARPA funds, federal funds that have, you know, becoming available pretty much on a daily basis, marry those priorities with the priority projects, with the funding sources, and then we actually complete the applications. What we do is largely relationship-based, so we have excellent relationships with analysts from, you know, all the state agencies we work with, DCED, DEP, DCNR, certainly Labor and Industry to the degree we need to involve them. We are also a state consultant to the Office of Budget. If you're familiar with the RACP program, Office of Budget administers RACP. Econ, we're on our second five-year contract with Office of Budget to be an official state consultant on behalf of the RACP program. So, you know, the projects where we're on this, as the state consultant side, of course, we're not also representing a municipality or grantee or private entity receiving funds, but we do certainly have both public-private, I guess, also nonprofit projects who are RACP recipients, and they're, so we have a great deal of history and experience with the program and an extra chip with the Office of Budget. And we do deal, you know, with additional state agencies and federal agencies as well, so we do quite a bit of EPA funding, EDA, which is Economic Development Administration, Pima and FEMA, and we work with some Homeland Security funding as well, particularly for our municipal clients. So we, our client base is, I would say, a spectrum. It's a healthy mix of public, so county and municipal clients. We represent some industrial development authorities and redevelopment authorities as well. We certainly have several nonprofit clients, certainly fire companies as well, a number of fire companies we do funding for, and then institutional, so hospital systems, healthcare systems, independent hospitals, colleges, universities, and development clients. So we have a nice spectrum, I think, of clients we work with, and we'd love to work with Lower Gwinnett, of course. We are located in Radnor, so Delaware County. I split my time between that office, it's a full-service office, and our office in Harrisburg. So the work that we do with public funding, particularly with the Commonwealth, we need to be in Harrisburg quite a bit. So again, whether it's face-to-face meetings with the agencies, the analysts, the decision-makers, Commonwealth Financing Authority Board, we do interface with legislative offices and the governor's office quite a bit on behalf of funding. It's important that we're not lobbyists, so we are probably deliberately not government relations firm, but we do support the work of folks who do that work, and we work hand in glove with them on particular projects where that's a relationship that is engaged. Most of what we do, frankly, and where our work originates is word of mouth. So generally, I would say nearly all of our projects are referral or relationship-based. Our oldest client, my first client, actually when I started the firm, is still a client today. I think we've done 12 or 13 projects together now. We currently have two that are active, and over the years, you know, we've been referred by existing clients, by engineers, architects, again, sometimes government relations professionals, or just colleagues, you know, other, you know, managers, supervisors, commissioners. It's, you know, generally a trusted relationship. We don't, you know, we don't produce a thing, so we're not making widgets. It's what we do is all results-based, so it's important that what we do is well-thought-out. We put a great deal of time into our grant writing, and we're very careful to make sure that our work product is excellent, so that what we produce has an excellent chance of not just meeting the priorities of that particular funding program and that particular funding round or year, which can change year to year. It certainly changes when an administration changes. For example, you know, if we do engage, which we would love to do, of course, this will cross a gubernatorial administration. So that's important because, you know, we prepare our existing clients for that possibility. For example, if you've got projects that aren't yet under grant agreement but are working towards that direction, as we approach a change in a gubernatorial office, we often accelerate some of those projects to see if we can get them under grant agreement before that office changes, so that we can protect that funding. But then we also, once that office does change and they establish deputies and secretaries, and they then implement their priorities before the funding rounds open, we spend a good deal of time with those, you know, the folks that we know, and introducing ourselves to the folks we don't, and then clearly understanding the priorities of that individual secretary or that office ahead of the funding round opening, and then we, of course, communicate that to our clients. But as I said, we do sort of full-spectrum funding, so identify the priorities on an annual or ongoing basis. We do the applications. Once we submit the applications, we do full post-submission support. So again, those relationships are so important, they come into play. We'll submit the application. We don't wait for the analysts to reach out to us. We, you know, give it a few days, contact the office, find out who our analyst was that was assigned, and then we proactively communicate with them, so that we're getting our, their questions answered. There's always questions. Getting their answers, question, their questions answered, getting additional information submitted in a timely manner, and trying to, you know, make sure that that's solidified before either the application and the project goes to, in many of the cases, the Commonwealth Financing Authority, so that board, and those four caucuses for consideration and vote, or in some cases, DCED, DEP, DCNR have administrative funds that they make decisions with staff. So, you know, we understand which programs are which, and we make sure we make that outreach. Once a project is awarded, we do, a lot of what we do actually is post-award compliance. So in fact, many have today, or clients we have today, started out as projects that had gotten in trouble in some way, shape, or form along the way, and it was stuck, for whatever reason. Could be payroll compliance, prevailing wage compliance. It could be steel, it could be bidding, it could be any number of things, you know, matching funds would refer them to us to step in and see if we could right the ship and handle that compliance. And then generally, once that happens, I can think of one client in particular, started with, you know, one crisis compliance project, and now we've got, you know, eight different projects across Pennsylvania with this particular client. It's probably been eight years now. So it's one of those things that, you know, once you're able to solve that problem and demonstrate that there is a path forward, and you can take that project through it, it tends to make the next couple of projects a little smoother. So we will support all of that. So the bidding process, okay, ahead.
No, I was gonna say, thank you so much, Colleen. I think you've given us a very comprehensive overview of what you, what you and Econ Partners do. I think that, my first question, I think you answered. You cover soup and nuts. You're identifying projects, you're making the application, you're also administering the funding once it's received, and then your relationship.
Drawdown as well.
Yes. So I'm gonna open it up to the board. Is there, are there any questions from remaining members of the board?
Is this a fee-for-service type of contract, or based on the award that they get?
It's a consulting agreement. It was in the manager's report. So the manager's report included the entirety of the consulting agreement, but it is a consulting agreement.
Okay. Is there a, are there any statistics around success?
I asked that question recently, last week, and I would say, and I'll answer it this way, no, I don't have an exact number, but I would say, I would say that not everything is funded immediately the first time you submit, submit a second, sometimes a third time. It just depends on the program, how many applications there are, how, you know, where you are in line. Perhaps there was a project that was there two years ahead of you, and that legislator needs to, you know, satisfy that priority. So ultimately, I think we're probably, I would say, 92, 93% success rate. It's high, and it's high for a number of reasons. We were very careful about the projects we take on. We take a look at a number of things before we, you know, hopefully, other, obviously, other folks have to consider to bring us on, but if we're looking at projects, we're pretty direct and say, we believe we can help you, and it's a strong project, and we believe it can be funded, and here are the reasons. Either the project hits stated priorities, we believe that you could have strong legislative support, or the governor's office says, you know, for example, workforce development is a huge priority for this governor. So depending on the type of project it is, we, you know, we give a pretty thorough recommendation on the onset, and I think set realistic expectations for, yes, this is a, you know, I've had to tell clients, you know, potential clients, no, we don't think we can help you, and I have to tell existing clients, municipalities in some cases, you know, that's, while I understand it's a priority project for you, it's not something that we think is going to score well, so let's maybe look at something else and reshape how we approach that. So I think we do a pretty good job of making that analysis ahead of time, and we're tenacious. So if we don't, you know, secure it the first time, we are back in that office, speaking to the analyst, speaking to the program director to say, you know, what happened? Was it just a case of, you know, the project didn't meet requirements, or didn't meet, you know, quite the scoring level, or the priority that the office put forth? Was there too much competition? Was there a legislative issue? It just wasn't a priority. So we make sure we identify what that issue is, and then if we have to take a different direction, that with resubmission, we'll do that.
Are there other sources of money that you would go after besides government grants and applications? Are there any public monies?
So we generally pursue just public funding. So whether that's, you know, on a county basis, it could be county-based ARPA funding, for example. I know, you know, Montgomery County is about to open its RFP, if it hasn't already today. I've been, I apologize, I've been on the road, but, so we'll do anything from, you know, county-based funding through federal funds as well, but it's generally all public funding. Occasionally, I mean, we have a number of nonprofit, particularly arts and culture clients. We've done occasionally with, with one of our team members had a background in foundation grant writing, but it's not a wheelhouse, and it's not something we typically do. Typically, the types of funds we seek are for capital costs, planning or capital costs. So infrastructure, you know, roads and streets, public safety, vertical construction, you know, public administration facilities, public works, those types of things.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Hi, Colleen Kathleen Hunsaker. Thanks for coming in. So we have a manager and an assistant manager. They're both salaried employees who heretofore have been writing our identifying grants, writing the grants, doing the administration, basically doing what you're proposing to do for us. And we also historically have had very good relationships with our state legislators in the House and the Senate, who also have helped us shepherd through the process and advocated for any applications that we decide to submit. And typically, they are the state funds, DC, DCNR, all the numbers, all the agencies that you
All the acronyms.
ticked off, as well as Montgomery County money. $48,000 a year is a significant budget item, and I'm wondering if you could speak to the value that you would add to what we currently have in place.
Sure. So I start with, that's tremendous, and I'm glad you have, you know, the manager and assistant manager that are assets in that regard and have the ability to do that. Many townships or municipalities aren't as fortunate, so that's fantastic. So in terms of how we would, we have a number of clients that have staff that have historically, you know, written grant applications and had success. A number of ways we can be of value is free up, of course, you know, their valuable time, so that they can focus on, you know, other aspects of running the township, essentially. And often, you know, we find that we may be aware of either, you know, aspects of programs that, you know, different tweaks, for example, in the way that, for example, multi-multi-modal or greenways trails, they might have a different focus, that's not going to be published in updated guidelines, they might have a different priority or set of priorities for this year's funding that we'll be able to bring that information to bear, essentially. Often, we can just add additional hours and add additional, you know, expertise in subject areas that we have quite a bit of experience in, depending on who's working on the grant application. So we can add, you know, things like, you know, data sources that we know that a particular program is looking for, manager is looking for, and tying projects into that. We can often identify funds that either folks aren't aware of, or, you know, in advance of them opening, so that we've got, you know, some window. Many cases, we know when things are going to open, or new programs have come through the legislature, and we can prepare our clients ahead of time. For example, local share was one of those. You know, we had worked, we actually had a role in advising, you know, during the, we had done a question and answer a number of times with the department in DCED and the community side that was going to launch the program and had gotten some, you know, not unofficial, but some calls to say, hey, you know, if we took this program this direction, how do you think it would be received? Do you think it would be, you know, useful to municipalities, to nonprofits? And we've, you know, we're a source of information and reference for the folks who are actually developing the guidelines, which, you know, is an opportunity, of course, we, you know, we took when we had that. So we knew, we followed it through the legislature, and we were aware, we're aware of when the program was going to launch, and we were able to, in a number of cases, prepare folks, you know, for the eventuality this would be opening, and have them thinking about, you know, what are your priorities, and, you know, have some early conversations with some of the decision-makers to say, you know, what are you thinking for your district? What are you thinking? Are your priorities? What are you seeing as a community benefit project? And have those conversations early, because we're, you know, aware, or, you know, have relationships with the folks that make those decisions. So that's often helpful. And some, you know, again, with compliance and post-award, particularly with RACP and Office of Budget, it changes every day. There's something, I learned something, been working with RACP for 20 years, but I learned something every day at the program that I didn't know before, that they're looking at differently or handling differently than they had in the past. So having, you know, that's, we found that invaluable for our RACP clients, is having that, you know, relationship with the Office of Budget and knowing who, you know, who's handling scope review, who's handling pay, you know, pay request review, who's the final decision-maker for things that don't require legal determination but required administrative determination, and what's the cleanest path to get over that hurdle. So we can often, you know, create time, where time, you know, doesn't, is a factor in being able to implement a project. We can expedite and maybe cut through some of that, that red tape and hurdles.
Thank you. You mentioned that you worked
Long-winded answer, I apologize.
No, that's, that's fine. Thank you. You mentioned that you worked with Radnor for 20 years.
Our offices, our office is in Radnor, but Radnor's
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we've, that's okay. That's quite all right.
So can you name some municipalities that are clients of yours?
Sure. So I spent the day in City Coatsville. So City of Coatsville, the city itself and its redevelopment authority have been clients for eight years. Borough of Wyomissing in Berks County, Springfield Township, Aston Township, and Delaware County, East Penn, East Pensboro in Cumberland County. Cumberland County itself is a client through Katic, its Economic Development Corporation, and its IDA. Borough of Oxford, Borough of Oxford's been a client for, I would say, nine, nine years, nine and a half years, and their Main Street separately, OMI, Oxford Main Street is also a client as well. West Whiteland Township in Chester County, West Nottingham Township in Chester County. Drawing a blank. That's certainly a healthy mix over the years. And we've had other municipal clients over the years, but those are certainly some of our current clients.
Thanks, Colleen.
You're welcome. Thanks for asking.
Is there any other questions from the board? Is there any questions from the audience? Online? Oh, go ahead. I just need you to state your name and address, sir. Can you state your name and address? I think we have a microphone, so they can hear you online.
Dan Steinman, 800 Norris Town Road, Spring House.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I'll be quick questions. I missed coming in, just a couple of questions. Is your organization a 501(c)(3)?
We are not. We're an S corporation. So we are, we are for-profit.
And how do you arrange your charges to the township?
There, this proposal is proposed as a monthly retainer with unlimited hours, which, you know, in the case of, particularly with municipalities, they like to know, in our experience, what to budget for and how to plan. And in many cases, for example, one of our municipalities, in March, we've got four different applications that are due. So that if we, for example, had to bill that at a monthly rate, it just, it wouldn't make fiscal sense for most of our municipal or for-profit clients. Absolutely. Thanks for the question.
That's all. Thank you.
Is there any, is there any questions online?
No.
You good?
Yeah.
I can't read it. Okay. Okay. I thank you so much, Colleen, for taking the time
Thank you for having me.
...in the evening to come and talk to us and to present this proposal. I appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Thanks so much. Have a good evening.
You as well. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. So we do have this presentation that we just received from Colleen, and before us, we have consideration for a proposal for Econ to assist in identifying funding sources for eligible products, projects. I want to work with Sam Park. Is there a motion to consider?
What do you mean, consider?
Consider the consulting proposal?
But to vote on accepting her proposal that we have
Yes, yes. Or is there any other questions from the board?
If we're, if this is something that we want to do, I think it would be prudent for us to look at other outfits that provide similar service.
How, how is it that this particular company came to our awareness?
I think she approached, well, I know that she approached me. I don't know if she approached anybody else on the board. She works in consultation with other entities and kind of just made me aware of their services.
I'm, I'm very much in favor and interested in this title of help. I consider it help for the, for the township, but it might be reasonable to ask a couple of other companies to see. What would you think?
I think we should, we're obligated to do that. It's professional service, Neil?
Yes.
Yeah, so not necessarily, but this is something that we've never done in Lower Gwinnett Township. And I also think we need to quantify what Craig and Jamie are doing currently in terms of finding grant money, applying, and success rate, et cetera, in terms of the money that we're getting, and in terms of how much that, if we can figure out the $4,000 per month versus what we're already getting through our salaried employees.
In your last week or the week before's manager report, there was a list of the grants that we've applied for, had gotten and had not gotten. So I think that information's been compiled.
It wasn't this manager's report, it was
No, it was the last, it was the last or the week before, yeah.
Yeah, it's an Excel sheet, I think.
Yes. So it's in there. We have the data.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie and Craig, we don't administer the grants here, do we?
We do.
Okay.
So I think the uniqueness of the time that we're operating in right now, and this is just from my perspective, is that due to the pandemic, due to the recovery that we're now in the midst of related to the pandemic, there's a significant amount of federal dollars, state dollars, money that struggled from the federal government down to the state and thus to the county, associated with that recovery process. These grants don't necessarily always, they're not always available. They're not annually available, and I think there's nuance to how they've changed this year. Local share grant's an example, but the way that they're, that they're opening up kind of the doorways for that more opportunities, so that more municipalities can take part in them. The issue that we have is historically, we haven't, we don't have an updated comprehensive plan. Our plan was updated in 2000. We are behind eight balls. It relates to a plan that we can actually project, these are the projects that we actually know we want to do, and this is the timeline in which we want to accomplish it. That would line up with the grant funding, and that typically would make it easier for a township manager or assistant manager to actually, to apply, to administer, to execute a grant. Because we have not done that, and the monies are there, we will miss out on the opportunities to apply for these grants. We will miss out on the opportunities. If we spend a significant amount of time reviewing other, other potential entities, and I'm sure there are other entities out there, but if we spend a significant amount of time reviewing them, the opportunity to apply for these grants will be gone.
And my, my reading of the contract, and Neil, you correct me if I'm wrong, but it is, the price is for a year, but we can terminate month, you know, within, we can just give 30 days notice. So we're not committed to a full year.
That's correct.
So in all actuality, this could be somebody that we use for a short period of time as it relates to a short period of grants. And then during that period of time, we have the opportunity to evaluate anybody else moving forward, anyone else more long-term, or to address, I mean, there's other things on our agenda that could kind of correlate with this, with this proposal, or this agreement, but for us to actually project what we want to accomplish within the next few years. The only concern that I have is that once this time period ends, that we're recovering from the pandemic, and these grant opportunities are here, the money will go away with it. And we, again, our poor planning, which I know we can't, couldn't have foresight that we're going to enter in a pandemic, but here we are now. Our poor planning, as it related to projecting what we knew we were going to need for Lower Gwinnett, or how we wanted Lower Gwinnett to look 5, 10, 20 years down the line, puts us in a position where we are not agile enough to be able to just apply for these grants. We don't have the paperwork, we don't have the narrative, we don't have the projects, we're not shovel-ready. I mean, that's just case in point. It would be undue burden, I believe, to put this on Craig and Jamie while also running the township.
So what, oh, sorry, great. What, what are our legal obligations in, of comparing?
We have none.
It's a professional services contract, so you don't go out to bid.
Okay. So I would be in favor of moving forward with this. I, I think that because of the nuances that you just mentioned, and having somebody who's already really enmeshed and immersed in the ins and outs of this new money coming from the federal government, I think it would be an advantage for us to use somebody that already is tuned in with what is required for the grant money. And I agree, it may just be a short-term requirement that we have. It shouldn't last for years or months even.
No, that, I don't think that's the intention. At least from my perspective. Is there, are there any other questions from the board? Is there questions from, are there questions from the audience? I saw a hand. You could just come up and use the microphone, because the online, they can't hear you. You said your name and address.
Gregory Harth, 230 Mathers Road in Ambler, technically Blue Bell, I guess. As a business owner in the area, these types of investments you guys are challenged to making are oftentimes, the question is, do you try to find the grant first, and then fill out the paperwork, or do you, do you hire somebody to go out and get the sales and create these opportunities? It would behoove the township to hire a professional like this to start scratching and clawing for these things, because there's just a windfall of cash out there that you guys can put into place a lot of things a lot faster than waiting to evaluate two or three more, more, for $4,000 a month, and then you can terminate anytime. Seems like an easy decision.
And one thing I'll note is Craig, Craig was able to put together a pretty comprehensive spreadsheet of the grants that we've applied for and gotten and not gotten over the past three, four years?
Five years.
Five years. And it looks like seven grants were denied, and I'm sure it was absolutely not for a lack of trying, but I think one of the things that will help is if we have somebody who's in that world, and maybe, maybe we have better success. It's, I think, to everyone's point, there's just a bunch of money out there, and we're going to lose it if we don't try to get it.
And in all honesty, it's our own tax dollars. They're coming back to us. I think Lower Gwinnett deserves it more than any other municipality, at least as much as any other municipality. So we have the consulting agreement in front of us. So we have the consulting agreement in front of us. If there's not any more questions, is there a motion to move forward?
I just have one more question.
Oh, go ahead.
Does Colleen Econ come to the Board of Supervisors for authorization to submit each grant that they identify?
Each grant? I think that's within the agreement, but I do believe, yes. I mean, I
We'd have to pass a resolution to
Each time, each time. No, they don't have carte blanche to just move forward without our authorization now, but it's, it's outlined in the agreement.
I'll move to retain Econ.
Is there a second?
If I could just
You have another question?
Add the addendum to the motion that we review performance every three or six months or monitor it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have no issue with that. Which one is it?
There's no question about that.
Three?
Three months, every three months?
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second it with the addendum.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have retained Econ. And next we'll go on to our regular business and finance receipt of the minutes for February 14th. Has everyone had a chance to look at those minutes?
Yes.
Is there any issues, questions or concerns? Are there any questions from the public? Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes have been accepted. There is a receipt of the invoice history for January 2022. Have everyone on the Board of Supervisors had a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Are there any questions?
No.
Are there any questions from the public? All those in favor, or is there a motion to accept the receipt of the invoice history for January 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You've accepted the invoice history for January 2022. Before us is a consideration of a proposal for Ecollect to perform auditing of the business privileged tax in Lower Gwinnett Township. We have had Ecollect, I think, two meetings ago, and I can't say the date, is it January, January 14th? 14?
February 14th.
No, 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 I know, no, no.
30th.
They came out in January to present the information about their business and to kind of make us aware of their auditing services. We've had subsequent informational gathering sessions with both Ecollect and Burckheimer, and we had a number of questions at our, our last meeting that we answered, I think, in those informational sessions. So we had before us a consideration of proposal for Ecollect to perform auditing of BPT in Lower Gwinnett Township. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the audience? Of the public?
I, I actually do have a question, and this is kind of maybe off the wall, but would, would Ecollect also evaluate the bills that we're getting, like from PICO? This came up in the Energy Committee meeting, in case we're being overbilled.
It's only the business privilege tax.
I don't think they do that type of auditing.
Yeah.
I mean, they're not in, they don't audit for anything. There are companies that'll do that kind of audit. But that's not Ecollect.
Okay. It'd be good to get a two-for, but okay.
Nah, this is just hopefully they can find us the money that's owed and bring it back to the township.
Okay, very good.
Any questions from the public? Is there a motion to move forward with the proposal for Ecollect to perform auditing of the BPT in, in Lower Gwinnett?
I, I actually have a question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, for our solicitor.
Yeah.
Did we work it out with Burckheimer that they'll give up their exclusive rights to do that?
I prepared an amendment to the agreement. They have it and they're looking at it. They have not signed it yet.
So anything we approve is contingent on that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I, I guess with that contingency, that I'll, I'll move to retain Ecollect, assuming that Burckheimer releases its exclusivity on the business privileged tax collection.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it does pass. We have accepted Ecollect to perform auditing of BPT in Lower Gwinnett Township contingent upon the agreement of Burckheimer releasing their exclusivity. Next is, uh, building and zoning. This is the request for additional waiver of sidewalk for the Goddard School. I think we have counsel.
Good evening, Elena Balerian, on behalf of Beth Pike LLC. Since we were here last time, I don't know if the, the board already has this, but our engineers had a chance to talk to the township's engineers. And I do have with me letters from both your traffic engineer and township's engineer with no objection to our requested partial waiver of the ordinance. I see not, so I don't know that I need to make further presentation. I will introduce my client, who is a resident of the township, who is here with me. But I would request our partial waiver of the 1230.45 ordinance regarding the sidewalk in front of Beth Pike.
I thank you for returning and I thank you for your patience with us.
I have a question. And it's not about the crosswalk, because it's okay with those guys, it's probably okay with me. I have a question about the sketch plan. And before I had this auspicious job, I was on the planning commission, so I'm familiar with this. What does that sketch plan demonstrate? Because it, it, it shows something that I was worried about when this came before the planning commission, I think. Which is somebody making a right out of Goddard and somebody making a left out of Yeah, I wasn't going to say the beverage place. It gives me a bad look.
A man.
Like Big Sushi.
Yeah.
So what, I, that's my question about this sketch plan. Why, what, what is this showing? No, this isn't the plan. It's attached to the, I think it's the traffic planning. Yes, that one.
Yes. So this is showing and I the radius required. So you have our driveway on the left and you have the beverage entities driveway on the right. The sidewalk area that had been in question is essentially where those, the blue arrow on the left would have been. There would have been a small piece of sidewalk there, sort of bridging between the two driveways. Instead, there would be no sidewalk there so that there is a full ability for the radius of the cars to be able to have that space and have more ability to turn.
So they can do a tighter turn?
That, that's what I'm trying, okay. So without, so no one has to go up on the sidewalk or the curb or whatever it is and that, so just the crosswalk of
And I, I air to the engineers that I've correctly analyzed the, the drawings, but that is my understanding that it would just have, there would, essentially it is exactly as it exists today with the exception of a painted crosswalk. The ordinance would have had us put in a small sort of means of progress or a spot in the middle, but there wouldn't have been a ability to turn.
That would be if the original proposal, the curb came up to the curb wall that's quite, and that went to analyze that, they decided, there's the correct unit, in order to have a certain sized truck, imagine emergency vehicle make that turn.
Yeah.
Uh, we should, we should originally, they would not be able to do that. So going through a couple of options, they came up with this, which is basically back to what it was. That way, there's radiuses far, far able to accept a vehicle of that size.
Okay. And forgive me, I forget, you know, all the details of the, of the plans that you've submitted and been approved, but there's lighting across the front of your property, there will be lighting across the front, or, okay, because I
I think you can even see it, yeah.
Okay, so I, my point is the, you'll be able to see the crosswalk. It'll be clear that there's a crosswalk there even at night.
I believe it shows a light post right at the edge of the sidewalk where the curb cut would be, and I think that's one indicated on the other side there as well.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Is there any online?
No.
I appreciate your time. So in front of us, we have consideration for the waiver of the sidewalk for the Goddard School. Do I have a move, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the request to authorize an addendum to our side ordinance. So this is, is related to the Lower Leonard, Lower Gwinnett Little League. And the ability for the Little League to place advertising signs in their outfield, along the outfield wall. The Little League is in need of opportunities or the possibility to be able to raise funding. Just for, for them to keep on going and for them to have opportunities for, for all of our, our youth to be able to participate in Little League, honestly. I don't know if everyone else has had children go through baseball, but I have and it is costly. It is not what it used to be. So Lower Gwinnett Little League is asking or requesting changes to our side ordinance to allow them to place signs in the outfield. This, and I don't know if you guys can see it, this ordinance kind of is the entirety of it. So it would be a change to our zoning to add the new 12910 to be entitled seasonal Little League sponsorship signs, which will allow the Lower Gwinnett Little League, Township Little League to erect certain sponsorship signs at the township's own field, subject to certain terms and conditions. This is just to advertise for that ordinance. We have circulated this ordinance prior to this advertisement to our parking rec board, to our own planning commission and to the Montgomery County Planning Commission. And they've all come back with suggestions and recommendations, which we have included in, in this proposed advertisement. Is there any questions from, or are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public?
Yes, Lynn Smith, 507 Hobby Horse. What kind of signs are these? Are they electronic or are they standards?
They're not electronic signs. They're the signs, essentially, if you look, if you drive past Ingersoll Field, there are signs already that adorn some of the cages. Not advertisements, but signs for past championships or past performance for the Little League. It'd be signs similar to that. The ordinance provides that they can't be higher than the outfield fence. It sets forth a certain size of the signs. So they would not be electronic, no.
Okay, and they would only be up during baseball season?
Yes, but that being said, I think the thing that most people probably should understand is baseball season is not the spring anymore. It is the spring, the summer, fall ball. I mean, I think it's going to be a nine months a year type thing.
Okay, I would just hope that it wouldn't litter the neighborhood.
I'm not sure what you mean by litter. The signs will be, the signs will be there. They won't be able to come down. They'll be attached to the outfield wall.
Right, well, I mean, take away from the charm of the neighborhood. I know it's a baseball field. I, I, I did not like when the electronic signs went up at the Baptist church. So that's what I'm concerned about, that it would change the nature of the neighborhood.
Understood. There will not be electronic signs, but I understand the question. Thank you.
Okay. And I do understand it's longer than just the spring, so it seems to me that the signs would be up pretty much 12 months out of the year. So what's the point in taking them down for a few months?
That may, that may be how it works in practice, to be honest with you. I just don't know, just given baseball has sort of expanded beyond one season.
Right. So is your hope then that by collecting this advertising money, that you would reduce the fees for the kids to play baseball? Is that the objective?
We don't, we don't actually collect any money. This is for the Lower Gwinnett Little League.
Right, right, right. So is that their objective is to lower the cost for the kids to play?
I don't know if that's entirely their objective. They have some ambitious projects that they would like to undertake at some of the fields, including bringing restroom facilities to some of the, to some of the fields, which is very expensive.
Right, that would be expensive.
They want the opportunity to try to raise money to be able to do those things. And, and the one thing that I think shouldn't be lost here is that we're one of the very few municipalities that don't have this type of advertising on their outfield walls.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional comments? Deborah, you said your name and your address?
Yeah, this is Deborah Schaefer at 823 Penland Pike. Just for clarification, are these the signs like the ones that are at the, the baseball fields of the high school?
I believe, I believe they would be similar. Yeah, they do have signs in the outfield.
I don't, I don't, that I don't know.
I don't know if they're going to be the exact same thing, but
I don't know if they're going to be the exact same thing, but Deborah and Lynn as well, we did the best we could in the ordinance to you know, make the signs uniform in terms of size and color. They'll be facing inward towards the ball field, not outward towards the street. We did the best we could without running afoul of First Amendment restrictions. So your concerns are our concerns too. And I think they've been well addressed in this ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
One comment.
Lori has a question.
Was there another question on there?
There is. You, you want to go first?
No, go ahead.
Ms. Jones? You have to unmute.
I don't know how, is that okay?
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay. Um, Gloria Jones, 1007 Persian Road, Penland, PA. My children were in Penland baseball. And I am very much for the baseball league. However, I feel that some consideration should be given to the fact that there was a neighborhood here before Little League. And I think some considerations should be given to how the Little League baseball will affect our neighborhood. And I think that maybe you should give some more consideration to the type of, of signs that you intend to put there. But like I said, I believe in the Little League baseball, but I also believe in the community that we should have an opportunity to make sure that we are not overwhelmed in the summertime by Little League baseball. And I thank you for allowing me to share my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Do you want to?
Well, I'm not, I guess the signs will all be inward-facing, so it's, you won't, you won't see the signs in the neighborhoods. And they'll, they'll be facing in towards home plate. As far as consideration, I'm not necessarily sure I understand what you mean, but if you mean the, the content of the signs, the First Amendment doesn't, and I don't want to step on Neil's toes here, but the First Amendment doesn't allow us to regulate based on content or viewpoint. We can regulate based on time, place and manner, as long as it's neutral principles, but we can't regulate content. So we couldn't say you can only have this sign, but you can't have that type of sign. The one thing I will tell you is in the conversations that I've had with the Little League, this as, as easily, and I, I sort of say easily tongue-in-cheek, because my oldest son is 22 and we've been looking to do this since he played Little League. So it hasn't been all that easy to get to this point, but as easily as the authority to grant signs was given is as easily as it could be taken away. So it will be incumbent upon the Little League to use its best discretion in the signs that they choose to put up. I don't know if that answered your question. I don't know if that answered your question.
Does that answer it, Ms.?
Oh, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry. As far as it goes, it answers my question. But it doesn't answer my question in terms of impact on a neighborhood, and I don't know how that could be resolved, but I was just asking if some consideration and some thought would be given to it.
You're talking about the larger idea of baseball in Penland's neighborhood?
Yeah, I'm talking about the, the, the whole impact, but signs just seems like another thing to impact on the neighborhood and, and that's a, I don't know anything about legal thing in, in reference to that, but I, I'm just thinking of about the impact it has had on our neighborhood. That's all.
I appreciate the comment. Thank you so much. Is there any other comments from the? Oh, Tiffany?
Yeah, I think you actually answered. I thought there was a concern at some point about political signs versus signs for restaurants or et cetera, but if that is running afoul of the First Amendment, then then we can't resolve.
Yeah, we have to be very careful in that regard.
Okay.
So this is just for the advertisement over the authorization to advertise the amendment to our sign ordinance from March 14th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have approved the authorization for the advertisement of the addendum to our sign ordinance from March 14th, 2022. Next up, Brookside Avenue resident requests for update on, on the flood study. Going to ask our engineer, Jim?
Yeah, thank you.
So some of the neighbors in Brookside are, have questions and concerns as to where we are with that process, what that process looks like, and an outline of maybe how the time, how they can anticipate it moving forward.
Sure. So I think the last time I was in front of you to give an update on this was in January, and I had highlighted that we were waiting on FEMA's we were waiting on FEMA to get back to us on giving the, their flood data and their flood study that they had conducted to generate the floodplain. We could receive that information last week. I wasn't really able to delve too deep into it, but I was able to take a look at it very briefly, and that'll allow us to decide where we want to do some more detailed targeted survey. So next step is to mobilize survey and have that stuff done. I would think in the next month, we would be able to do that, and then, you know, probably maybe a month after that is the, the analysis period, and then I think we're on track to, I had mentioned wanting to wrap this up in the first half of this year, so we're, we're still on track for that, certainly.
So you received the data from FEMA, you do a survey that takes approximately a month, and then you do the analysis. We're, we're thinking, what is this? We're going to see this is March.
Yeah, I would say if we could, if I could, at the end of April, give another update, I would have a lot more information than I have now.
Okay, so I know that some of the, the residents are just concerned about, you know, this is the time of year where it does rain. And we're going to probably be, hopefully not, hopefully not, but there, there could probably potentially more incidents of flooding, and it's not just, it's not just related to Brookside. Actually, I think some people have reached out to me and let me know that on Francis and other surrounding streets that they've had some issues and impacts. So all of that, I just want to ensure that all of that's going to be incorporated in, in some of the analysis that you're going to be doing.
Yeah, I mean, generally, the channel that runs from the railroad track up to the dam at the school district's property and everything that drains to that is, is in the scope
Okay.
of, of the study. It's not Francis is one or two over from
One street over.
One street over, so yeah, that, that would definitely be.
So I think flooding from Brookside has gone into neighbors' backyards on Francis. That's really what I think it is amounted to. So once you come back in April, we'll have a better understanding of where we are, and do you think that they'll be able to be at that point of determination as to any source or not quite? Is that ambitious to ask?
I think that the scope of this is to build a model of, of the existing situation and then try to decide whether or not certain improvements can have a measurable impact on ma- making that, that flooding better.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's my end goal. I don't know that I'm going to be able to have a, a solution to you, because I don't know that one
exists.
Exists, but
So is it, is it reasonable to assume that at the end of this study that we'll have an idea of what the source of the, of the problems with the excess water coming onto residential streets would be, or is that, and where, you know, on what property that source is coming from, or is that unrealistic?
I think that we would have an idea of where the pinch points are that are creating the flooding on the residential streets, certainly, yeah.
Okay.
It's impossible, given the scope of the study, to figure out where upstream it's coming from.
Well, I can tell, yeah, I mean, I could tell you where it's coming from, and it's 100 plus acres of various development. You know, it's not just, it's not coming from the school district. It's not coming from, you know, I mean, it, that drainage area is all the way across Bethlehem Pike in those neighborhoods that Aileen, and I mean, that's where it sort of kind of starts.
So that's, that's what I was wondering, like, you can say, like, it's because of the development that's on the other side of Bethlehem Pike, whether it be Mike's neighborhood, or I'm joking, I'm sorry. Or any other neighborhood that has erected and caused those downstream to be impacted. I mean, so it's not just like one thing, it's not, it's a, it's a multitude of compounding factors that are now resulting in increased flooding.
Yes, there's, there won't be a verdict in this where I say it's this person's fault, or it's this entity's fault, even though we know it's Mike's.
I appreciate that. I know that, are there any other questions from the, any other member of the board? I don't want to.
I, I, I guess I will, I don't want to make you look predict the future, but do you ultimately, we need to figure out solutions. Forget about where it came from, and ultimately, I mean, I mean, part of the solution might be where it comes from, but you feel confident that once we get all the data back, that there will be some suggestions for solutions?
There will definitely be suggestions for solutions. It's just a matter of whether or not those solutions make a measurable enough impact that you all deem it economically feasible.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
It's going to be a dredging project.
Yeah. Are there, are there any other questions from the board? Are there any questions? I know that we have members in person and online from Brookside. Do you have any other, you want to come and have? Mr. Murray, there's, if you could just say your name and, and your address?
Pass us around to the board members.
Appreciate you, Jim.
Mr. Murray, I don't want to interrupt you while you're speaking, so can you make sure that you talk into the microphone, just so everybody at home can hear you? Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to. I'm William Murray. I live at 413 Brookside Avenue. William Murray, you got it?
Yeah.
There you go. William Murray.
What's happening?
William Murray, I live at 413 Brookside Avenue. I'm part of the Brookside Avenue Neighbors, and I'd like to read a statement which we prepared. It says, Board of Supervisors, the Brookside Avenue Neighbors would like to be a partner and find the solutions to the flooding on Brookside Avenue. We know it will be a long journey, the first step taken, the flood mitigation study. However, our future input and sharing strategy is vital because our lives and homes are dependent upon it. Who but the residents know the flood conditions of the neighborhood? A perfect example of cooperation occurred on October 19th, 2021, between neighbors, business, school board, and township. A dozen residents, two representatives from Android Yard, school board secretary and township manager and engineer came to work together. Let us not clean the culvert to debris of flooding has occurred, voices be heard. Be proactive, include everybody directly impacted by flooding on Brookside Avenue. And this could be done by notifying all the 21 residents of Brookside Avenue by mail, future meetings, time and place. My, the gist of my concern is that we, we are directly impacted by this flooding and that we have a voice in the matters that are being discussed by the engineer and township's school board, and we can become part of the process.
Absolutely. No, I think as things, and I think that's what Jim was kind of speaking to at this, today. At, at this point, we're kind of in a preliminary step, so he just received the FEMA information. He's now kind of analyzing that information and what that looks like as far as a period of time that he needs to analyze, and then the next step is the study, and the next step is that he would be able to come back to us, potentially, he's giving us April, but we'll say at the very latest May, to give us a report as to what he's able to, not just surmise, but through his experience and expertise can, can tell us as far as what are the pinch points that are causing the increase in flooding. It's not specific to one thing, and that's what we were kind of extrapolating from our conversation before. It's not one specific thing. I know that it would be much easier if we can point our finger at somebody and say, you've caused this. But it seems like it might be a history of a development that didn't exist previously, that has increased over, you know, period of 10, 20 years potentially, and now is impacting us in a way that the flooding is, is now uncontrollable, or at least not manageable. And then, you know, we hope that he's going to be able to provide us solutions so that we can address or figure out how we could potentially address it and, and and then make decisions moving forward. So at that point of the analysis and the, and the information being gathered, 1,000%, we're going to be at the table as far as stakeholders, and we're directly impacted. You know, we're property owners as well as there's businesses that are affected, but residentially, you know, we're all, we're all impacted, you know, tremendously. Almost each time it rains, we're concerned. So I, I don't think there's any way that we could not be a part of the conversation, but I'm here to let you know that you will be.
Okay, that's all that we're asking for.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are there any questions from online? Okay. Cynthia, could you just say your name and address? I think you might have to unmute. Can you hear us, Cynthia?
Okay, the unmute, I'm unmuted now.
There you go. Just say your name and address.
Okay, I'm Cynthia Best, and I live at 420 Brookside Avenue. And I would just like the, the person who goes and does this evaluation to please look at that big cement bridge at the top of the street. I've been here in this neighborhood for 40 years, actually over 40 years. And it hits that bridge, the big cement bridge, and it pops out into the street. So it's, it's always flooded our street, you know, so I just would like it if they would look at that. And I think that that would just be part of a simple solution to remove that, or if they don't want to remove it, they could do a metal one across, you know, instead of that big cement glob that really does clog things up. And it pushes all kinds of debris into the street, and the township comes and cleans it up every time. But it's getting more and more dangerous, more and more dangerous, so please look into that.
Cynthia, are you talking about, you're talking about the bridge that's connected to the property on Marion Avenue?
I am.
Okay, so I think we're aware that, and I, our solicitor is kind of shared correspondence with that neighbor to let them know that that is against our zoning ordinance. However, we have not moved forward with addressing or requesting any immediate removal because of the need for the study. I mean, there's the potential that removing that bridge would ultimately, and I'm not an engineer, but I believe that it, it could, in the event of a flood moving forward, just basically flood Android Yards, essentially. And we wouldn't want that to happen, not that, not saying that the, what's happening right now is okay. But that's the reason for the study. That's to actually find the source of the problem as opposed to addressing one of the effects that we're feeling, you know, personally, and, and, you know, through our, you know, through our property. So again, the, the purpose of the study is for him to actually look at the, the larger issues, the root causes as it relates to why the flooding is happening in the first place. And then as it relates to, is, is the dam impacted, and, and is the dam being impacted affecting the water, and then is the water impacted causing it to rush at a high level down our street, down the bridge, hit it and cause debris to flood, flood our street? So it's, it's not just, we're not looking for a simple, short-term solution that could potentially cause other problems. We're kind of looking for the root cause issue so that we can address it more strategically. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but we might not be able to do anything, we might not be able to do anything about Aileen development, so.
No, absolutely, absolutely, but there could hopefully, hopefully be some solutions that he can present to us to resolve the issue as it relates to what we currently are dealing with. Obviously, we can't tear down all the houses on Aileen.
Absolutely.
But I mean, like, I, I, I think what the hope is and what the goal is, is that he can prevent, he can provide us with solutions to mitigate some of the problem that we're faced with currently.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Are there any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. If there's no other questions from the audience, I think we'll move on. And thank you, thank you, Jim. The next thing under consideration is local share grant application for the rehab of Old Bethlehem Pike Culvert, I believe. Do you want to talk about this, Craig? So I, I know that there's a, a new grant opportunity that's been made available, and I think one of our previous presenters touched on it. It's a local share grant that historically is proceeds from gambling monies essentially, that now is made available to municipalities in, in larger or more open application process where there isn't strict guidelines. So you can kind of
Yeah, so we looked at the, the grants. Jamie put that Excel sheet together that Mike, you talked about a little while ago. One of the opportunities that we're looking at is the culvert at Old Bethlehem Pike, which is behind the township building here, looking to rehab that culvert, and we thought the local shares grant from DCED would be a, hopefully a good match. So we're, this is just a resolution for us to submit a grant application in the amount of $786,000 for rehabbing that culvert behind the township on Old Bethlehem Pike.
I just have a quick question, Craig. Is our estimate of the 786 still pretty solid? I mean, I, was it a while ago that we got the 786 number, and I know costs of everything have gone up?
Yes, we re-looked at that, that number and were were pretty, pretty certain that that is correct at this point, too.
Great, thank you.
Do we have a match?
Local share grant does not have a match.
So I know that the, the information regarding the grant and then the application, I think were included in the manager's report. Are there any other questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Okay. Okay. I'm seeing no other questions. Is there a motion to move forward with the submission of, and we don't have a resolution number, but the resolution to authorize submission of a local share grant application for rehab of the Old Bethlehem Pike Culvert?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion pa, um, there is nobody else. Yeah, a motion pass. We are approve the submission of local share grant application for rehab of the Old Bethlehem Pike Culvert. Next is the submission for the Monco 2040 application for the installation of pedestrian bridge on the western side of Bethlehem Pike across the stream. I don't know if it's Craig or Jamie, do you want to talk about this again?
It would be the same. This is a Monco 2040 grant. We're looking at for $200,000. There is a match of 20%, but we're looking at a 30% match. $200,000 is the max for the, the grant. This would be very similar to the, the grant we received from Monco 40 for the, I guess, east side northbound pedestrian bridge that we are working on now. That would be right after Bergy's on the Wawa side of Bethlehem Pike. This particular grant in front of you tonight is for the This particular grant, um, in front of you tonight is for the west ba, uh, west side, western side, southbound from Springwood Association to, um, it used to be the Nav Dodge. Now it's being used by Bergy's on the opposite side of Wawa.
Everyone knows where Wawa is.
Everything revolves around Wawa, but, um, so we're just looking for another submission to Monaco forty for two hundred thousand dollar grant with a thirty percent match.
All this information was included in matter of further. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, uh, do we have a, a diagram or what is it we're paying for?
A pedestrian bridge over the creek.
Yeah, but I haven't seen any pictures, diagrams, illustrations, dimensions.
Will it be just like the one across the street? Basically, I mean.
It's going to be exactly like the one across the street and the one on Welsh Road that we put in. If you want to actually see something in person, you could see the one on Welsh Road, um, near Landfair and Lloyd. Between those two, the one at Gwinnett Hunt is another one, uh, that crosses the bridge.
Um, is, is this wide enough for two people to walk side by side?
Oh, more than that.
It's, it's much wide.
It depends how big the people are. Yeah, yes, I think it's six foot wide, Jim. Yep, I believe it's six foot wide.
Okay, so somebody with a baby buggy could easily go across it. Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, we, Janine and I actually crossed it with, uh, her son Sam in the stroller. It's the one on, um, Bethlehem Pike. So, yeah.
He made it.
And we can get the diagram and, um, a photo of the, a similar bridge in the packet for this week.
Are there any other questions from the supervisor? Are there questions from the, um, public? This is, okay, there's nobody online. So this is, um, to submit the Monaco twenty forty application for installation of pedestrian bridge on the western side of Bethlehem Pike across from the stream. Um, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're approving the Monaco twenty forty application for the installation of pedestrian vision on the western side of Bethlehem Pike across from the stream. Um, this is for consideration of the, um, Penn E N R, um, proposal for nine oh one semi-town Pike to provide additional sampling in a final act to close out report. I believe this information was included in the manager's report, but Craig, do you want to speak to it?
Sure, uh, nine oh one semi-town Pike is the corner of, uh, well, semi-town of Bethlehem Pike, across the street here where the new shopping center is, um, where you see Arpeggio. Uh, the township used to own that corner, um, went out for, uh, sale of this lot in two thousand and seventeen. It was, um, purchased by the Spring House Village Association. And, um, with the agreement was that we would do a cleanup of the, um, of the, uh, parcel at that time. Um, so we've been going through the environmental cleanup and this is hopefully the last stage. We, uh, submitted back in, uh, well, actually March of two thousand and twenty, what we thought was the final report. Um, they came back and, um, D E P came back, I'm sorry, and asked us to do a, um, soil vapor sample of these three locations that are on the, the screen right now. So this proposal by Penn Environmental Remediation is for fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars to do a vapor soil sample in these three locations. They have to do it at two different times. So that we'll do this twice. Um, and what they explained, how they explained it is basically like a radon test for, uh, for a home, if you ever had that done. Um, so they'll do that, they'll write their final report, they'll submit it to D E P. They're pretty confident that, um, there won't be any more, um, studies that had to be done or anything, and that we can close this out for an act two, uh, release.
I just had one question. There's, so the cost of this seems to be fourteen thousand nine hundred dollars. Do we budget it any way for this? Or do we anticipate this?
Uh, every year, this has been in with the engineering, the general engineering fees, because this has been, this has been going on for a while.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other questions from the board? Questions from the public? Anything online? Okay, so this is, um, consideration of the penny in our proposal for nine oh one semi-town Pike to provide additional sampling and a final act to close out report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Passes. Consideration of the penny E N R proposal for the nine oh one semi-town Pike to provide additional sampling and final act to close out. Next is the request to authorize to advertise R F Ps for the roofs and gutters at Ingersoll House and Barn, which is eleven twenty Old Bethlehem Pike, and the McCormick House, which is four oh nine Old Penland Pike. Um, I know that these items are in our budget, but do you want to speak any further to this, Craig?
Um, yes, this is just in the budget. We just wanted to get moving on this if the board is, uh, inclined to do so. Um, both properties, the McCormick piece down on, um, Penland, uh, Old Penland Pike and the McCormick House behind us here are both in need of roofs. And McCormick definitely, or, um, Ingersoll definitely need gutters. We're not sure about McCormick. But we would like to go out and, uh, seek bids for, uh, doing both projects at the same time.
So, so the only question I have is specifically related to the McCormick House. I know that it's going to potentially be incorporated in a, a planning study. That's the next item on the agenda. Um, so is there any costs associated with us seeking this R F P? Because if so, you know, if, if different recommendations are made as a result of anything else that we're doing, um, I don't want us to unnecessarily waste money essentially.
Yeah, there's, there, there wouldn't be any cost with the, uh, going out for an R F P. We would have to write the R F P that we can, you know, each would be a separate line item. The roof for Ingersoll, the gutters for Ingersoll on the roof for McCormick. So it would be three different projects that we can eliminate. One, if we, if it comes in too high, or if we decide not to do it.
Okay.
But, um, but we would have to do some kind of repair down at McCormick, um, just because we are having some leakage.
So is there, there's, like.
Intrusion of water into the house.
I don't want to say flooding, but okay.
No, no, it's.
Is, is the building empty now?
The houses, yes, the residences.
Okay.
Not the garages.
So are they going to assess the need for roof and or gutters on both structures, or we've decided that we want to replace, oh, already?
Both are in need of a new roof, yes. We have already determined that, yes.
Are there any questions from the board?
So we can write the R F P, as I said, stated with three different line items, and that we can pull one out if, or pull all three out if we want, but.
Yeah. Okay. I appreciate that. Are there questions from the public?
The, the only thing I would add from McCormick House is if, and I don't know if you put this in the R F P, if it's just something you discuss with them, but, you know, the cost to replace the roof first, maybe just put a Band-Aid on it while we're assessing what we're going to do, I think would be helpful to know as well. Um, because if there is leakage right now that we want to remediate, um, you know, we may want to understand what that option is as opposed to just replacing the whole roof.
Is there, is there damage incurred to the home at this point?
Some inside damage, the drywall and so forth.
Is it, have we gone through insurance in any way?
We have not.
Is it just where?
I think it's deterioration.
Okay, it's not, okay, it's earned here, gotcha.
That's what you do when you buy it as is.
Okay. Any other questions? So this is for a request to authorize advertisement of an R F P for the roof and gutters at Ingersoll House, the barn, eleven twenty Old Bethlehem Pike and McCormick House at four oh nine Old Bethlehem Pike. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we have approved the request to authorize the, the R F P for roofing that is at Ingersoll House and Barn and then McCormick House. Next up is the consideration of the Gilmore proposal for Lower Quinney Strategic Park Planning Project. Um, Jim, do you want to get up and tell us a little bit about it? Or you can sit, it's perfectly fine.
Okay. No problem. So, uh, in front of you is a proposal from my office to perform, uh, strategic planning related to your parks and recreation system. Uh, just a kind of a brief overview of, of the scope. So there's five township parks, and, uh, we would do site visits to all of those as well as conducting, uh, key person interviews. Um, anticipated, uh, individuals for the key person interviews, Parks and Recreation Director, Township Manager, and then any other key individuals as designated by your, uh, Parks and Rec Subcommittee of your board. Um, so we would review all the, the existing facilities, um, and, uh, analyze that, that data get gathered from the site visits and, um, include a summary of, of every park and, and what it's currently used for today. Um, and then provide recommendations and analysis based on that and, um, regional, local, and national trends in park and recreation usage for, you know, potential projects that you guys could do to upgrade, uh, your park facilities, either, you know, retrofitting existing stuff or adding new uses and, uh, stuff like that. I guess the, um, we're looking at a project timeline of like four to six weeks, and the cost is ten thousand dollars. Be certainly happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Is it unrealistic for us to shoot more for si, four weeks?
Yeah, I mean, the step one is, is the site visits and the interviews. I, I think that would make a lot of sense to do both of those things sort of simultaneously, where we just kind of pick a day that works for everyone and we just, we spend it touring the parks and sort of spitballing ideas from there. So as soon as you guys can decide who you want to be on there and we can get everyone's schedules, you know, we can start. So if we can start, then yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board?
Is, is this something that we could pay for out of the grant money or the federal money?
That. Are you talking about our rescue monies?
Yes.
Theoretically, we could, but I, I wouldn't, uh, recommend it.
Okay.
I mean, that's just my personal opinion. But yes, we, we, we could. I mean, I, well, I mean, there's some restrictions, but I think the restrictions have recently lifted as far as what rescue monies can, can and be used for. I'm not certain that consulting or strategic planning is allowed, but it, it could be.
Oh, I, I was actually referring to the, the actual work of redesigning the parks and implementing new equipment and so forth.
I think the hope would be that we find grants for a lot of those things, but we won't know until we get the plan back and see what they recommend and, um, see what's out there at the time. I mean, the, the problem is we won't know until we get the, the, the plan back from Gilmore. And then we'll all have to get together and say, or, you know, it'll go through Parks and Rec, and they'll say, hey, we want to do this, we want to do that. And then they'll bring it to us. I mean, by the time it gets back to us, reality is probably summer, you know? By the time we get it back and say, okay, here's the, the Parks and Rec's recommendation, we won't know at that point what grants, there could be more grants, there could be less grants.
Yeah, no, I get it. I, I just thought that if, um, if we were able to do this very expeditious, expeditiously, um, we might go to apply for funds because.
The, the goal, I mean, I, I can only speak for me, but the, I think the goal is to apply for funds no matter what we do, to be honest with you. I mean, if we can get essentially what is our tax money back to us, we should do it every time, right? I mean, I don't, what, what would be the harm in that? So.
The, the timeline, that's what I'm referring to.
But, but there's always, there's always new grants and new money coming out. So I think that's always the goal. Let's figure out what's out there. As soon as we figure out what we want to do and we can see what's out there.
What is the object for econ?
Well, I think they'll be doing stuff more before then.
Are there any other questions on the board? Are there any questions from the public? Um, so we have before us, uh, sorry.
Consideration of the.
Yeah, uh, so that's what I was going to say, recall this consideration, we're actually, consideration of the Gilmore proposal. We have in front of us the proposal for the Lower Quinney Strategic Park Planning Project. Um, is there a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, so we have authorized the Gilmore proposal for Lower Quinney Strategic Planning Project. Thank you. Next up is the request to, um, authorize advertisement for the summer camp help. I think we had job description and an outline identified in our manager's report that talked about the hiring of summer help for fourteen dollars an hour. Um, and the requirements were, was it sixteen or fourteen? Oh, no, this is actually the one that's over the age of twenty-one. No, that's camp director. Okay, so they're all there just listed in totality, um, with different pay based upon the different just job description. Is there a total amount of summer help that we're hiring for, or we're just putting this out?
We usually do it based on the amount of people that are, uh, um, signed up for the camp.
So it's based on enrollment?
Yes.
Okay. So are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Um, so is there a motion to authorize the advertisement for summer camp help?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have approved and authorized the advertisements for summer camp help. Next is the request to authorize advertisement for the seasonal summer help in public works. I think this is the one we tabled from last week. Um, in front of us is a job description um, that outlines the hourly rate as well as the age. Does it say the age? I thought I read the age. Oh, we talked about it. Yeah. So it doesn't indicate it here, but I'm sure when it is circulated, it'll indicated, they must have a P A, you know, valid driver's license, pass for drug and alcohol screening. And sixteen is the minimum age that that can.
That, that's in here.
It is in here. Okay, I thought I read it. Okay, so are there any questions related to the, um, season or seasonal summer help in public works?
And that's for two seasonal.
Another question from the public? Is there a motion to approve and authorize the advertisement for seasonal summer help in public works?
Yes, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have passed and authorized the, and authorized the advertisement for seasonal summer help from public works. Next up is the consideration to purchase trash can lids in park, in parks, and the rototiller for public works. Are we doing these together? Fred, you going separately?
We're together.
Yeah.
The two for. Um, so we have in front of us the two thousand and twenty-two capital budget allocated fund for the purchase of forty new trash can lids for the parks and trails. Um, some are currently missing and or damaged. This is replacement of all forty, is that correct, Craig?
Correct.
And, uh, we have attached a copy of the proposal, the cost is a tally of forty-three hundred and forty dollars. Um, is there any questions from the board?
I make a motion to approve said purchase.
Second.
I guess we're skipping the public, I'm sorry. All those in favor? No, I know. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We've approved the, unauthorized the trash can lid, um, proposal for parks and rec. Um, the rototiller for public works. Um, it's allocation of funds for rototiller and rototiller. I think there was a picture included in our manager's report. It's basically, we were renting one at a time, and this is for us to own one. Is that accurate? Um, and it work on the baseball fields and the park, and we use it for other projects as it relates to things that have to be tilted. Are there any questions for Fred, or, or are there any other additional questions from the board? Question from the public? Is there a motion to approve and accept, um, consideration for a purchase of the rototiller for public works?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have approved and authorized, uh, the rototill for public works. Next up is the consideration to accept the dedication for the sewer line at one thousand to Cal Pike. Um, it seems pretty straightforward, but I'll let Craig explain it.
I'm going to go to Jamie. She's been working on this for months, so.
There you go, Jamie.
Might as well have something to say.
It is your time to shine, Jamie. Let's go.
Just in front of you is just, the township has to accept the dedicated sewer line that was installed, um, at a hundred to Cal Pike and, um, allow for the neighboring property at sixteen twenty-one Gypsy Hill to connect into that force mean upon acceptance. Um, the sewer solicitor did want the motion to include. Um, he did want that the, the motion to include the condition that all professional services, service costs are reimbursed to the township for the maintenance escrow and the tapping fee reimbursement due, um, to the owner. to the owner from adjacent property with the remaining balance refunded to the owner. So, the, what, we have a maintenance escrow established for this project. We will pay off what is owed to the township with the remaining balance and anything that's left over will be returned to the owner at 100 to Cow Pike.
Okay, I'm, I'm, don't see those, that exact language written in anything that we have. Is it just something that he-
It's just something that you want to have said in the motion to approve it.
All right, so say, I don't see it where it's online where I can actually read it.
How we make the motion?
Based upon Jamie's recommendation of the approved language to approve, accept the dedication for sewer line at 100 to Cow Pike.
Actually, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Did Mr. Ferandino sign these documents yet?
He did sign and notarize them.
Is that good?
That's it.
All right. Okay, or before we go forward, are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? So based upon Jamie's exact language related to the dedication of the sewer line at the 100 to Cow Pike, is there a motion to, to move forward?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have approved and accepted the dedication according to Jamie's language for the sewer line at the 100 to Cow Pike. Thank you so much. Committee reports. It's 8:35. How many committees have met in the interim? Is EAC and Park and Rec?
I don't think EAC has met.
Okay, just Park and Rec?
Just Park and Rec and really we just discussed the sign ordinance, which everyone was in favor of. Actually, they got some question, we got some questions to answer. The park's proposal, which are all very excited about. And then Sandy put together this, it's, we'll be debuting it sometime soon. We'll have a demonstration here at a meeting hopefully, but it's a great interactive trails map that's really going to help, you know, the public better use and understand our, our trail system. So we're, we're excited about that as well. I think that, did I miss anything that we called?
Nope, that was all the, and, and as it relates to the discussion about your proposal, they're aware that they can put somebody, some member of the Park and Rec's board on your committee. They just didn't pinpoint anybody at that, at that particular meeting.
I'd just like to add that, um, the subcommittee of the EAC, which is the energy committee, there, there are multiple subcommittees, but this one met and they're going to have their second meeting pretty soon. And I'm, I'm putting out a, a request for the public to get involved in this committee. It's, it's going to be looking at energy conservation for the township. So, if you're interested, please contact, um, Melinda Wolf.
Actually, they can just contact, can't they just apply online and indicate their interest in the EAC as an associate member? The, the online portal allows volunteer applications just to be submitted by you entering your information. So if they do that and indicate EAC, that should be good to go as an associate member.
They don't even have to, I, I don't know that they have to fulfill the requirements for an associate member for a subcommittee.
Okay.
I don't know what the rules are for that. I don't know that there are rules.
As flown in the bylaws of the EAC. But I appreciate, I guess, that request for additional, um, help for the energy subcommittee. I don't know, Janine, do you want to speak to the Pike Fest inaugural meeting? Or is it something we're not ready to share yet?
Uh, well, I think we should meet with-
Yes, so I think that there was some discussion with the Pike Fest inaugural meeting and we did, I'm, I'm on that committee with Janine, but Janine is leading it. Just more of an observer. They have conversations about what the Pike Fest is going to look like. Everybody's energized and excited, but I think they have to have additional meetings in order to make a determination so that we can make any larger announcement. And that's where we are at this, in this stage.
Coming soon.
Coming soon, but it's starting to sound exciting.
Yeah.
I guess now is the time for, is there any public comment for anything that's not on the agenda? Anyone? Public comment. Is that you?
It's Carmina.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can everybody hear me? Hello?
Is it somebody online?
It's Carmina.
Uh, Ms. Camp, is it you, Carmina?
Yes.
Speaking. We do have somebody in person who is getting ready to speak, but then we'll come right to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh. Dan Steinman, 800 Norris Sound Roads, Spring House. Question, has the resolution on term limits for supervisors been tabled? Wasn't on the agenda.
That is correct.
Pardon?
It is not on the agenda for today.
Ah, well, it's been enjoyable hearing what's going on. But it was still on your website at 6:30.
I don't think it was ever on the agenda.
We advertised, we advertised.
I got your letter and I saw the advertising.
Yeah, we just advertised it.
But you tabled it.
We didn't table it. I didn't place it on the agenda to table.
Thanks.
But if you have any comments about it.
You can feel free to share. That's why you're here.
Yeah, you can still-
One, I'm very satisfied with what all the supervisors have done over the years. I question only the approach to this. Uh, has there been any public call either pro or con for changing? The, it affects all the people in the township, both those who want to seek office or retain office. I personally have no particular meaning either way, but I think it's something that should be considered to get as much public information in before you make your decision. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out, Mr. Steinman, and sharing your opinion. And that's part of why it's not on the agenda. We want to hear from the public at large. So it's allowing ample time for anyone and everyone to come forward and kind of share their perspective. That's at least my perspective as far as why it's not on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I think there was somebody online? Carmina?
Can you guys hear me?
You can. Can you just state your name and your address?
Well, this is Carmina Taylor. I am definitely a former resident, but I wanted to give you an update about the request I made last month about the signage in Penland. I wanted to just make everyone aware that I joined the Historical Society. I also applied for the Historical Commission and I also got quotes on the signage for Penland. So, I wanted to make that on record because I've done my due diligence and I need guidance as to what would be next. I'm at the Wusenhaken School Board meeting in the bathroom, so I would not be distracted. You can hear me or not. Not like in the bathroom, but in the stall. Not in the stall, but in the space.
No, I understand. Come right now. Um, as far as, as far as next step, I think that you were specifically talking about implementing or putting in the signs based upon the, I think your planned affair in, in April, is that what?
No, no, not at all, not at all. I said, the last comment I made um, at the last meeting is that I understood what you said that, you know, it would be ambitious, but I wanted to be diligent in moving forward with all the three things that were recommended. And I don't want to tell the quotes publicly, like, I don't want to discuss that, but I have it. And I'm just saying that I'm ready to work with somebody to move forward, but I also, I believe Tessie encouraged me to apply. I, I did and I haven't heard anything. And I've also joined the Wusenhaken Historical Society. So, three major things have evolved since I last was at your board meeting and I wanted you to know that so we could continue to move forward. Obviously, not with the intention to do anything in April, but to know that, um, other steps have been made.
So, Carmina, this is Janine Martin. So thank you for, for the update. I, I will just say, I think in terms of next steps, I think we gave the public and, and Danielle can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we give the public until tonight or until?
Today.
Yeah, until today to, to apply for the various committees, including the Historical Commission. And so, the next step is we'll be, we as a board, you know, we'll figure out, um, conduct interviews and then we will hopefully soon be appointing members to those committees. And then I think for, for you, whether you're on the committee or not, that, that would be the best way for you to interface and plan this idea. Get the committee on board and then the committee's job is to make a recommendation to the, to the supervisors. So I think that that's where, in, in terms of next steps, that's probably going to be the best way to move forward.
I just wanted to be clear. I didn't know when the deadline was, so, okay.
No, I appreciate that. And we, we were just giving people about, it's about, you know, a month and a half to, to fill out their applications. And then, and then we'll be appointing people soon, hopefully.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to go on record. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments online? I thought I saw a hand, but I couldn't see me.
She, there was a hand up, but it was a touch of a second.
Okay. Oh, Ms. Jones, um, can you just state your name and your address? And you have to probably unmute.
Um, Gloria Jones, 1007 Pershing Road, Penland, PA. I'm not saying that what has been presented about Penland Village and signs doesn't include valid criticism and feelings. But how it is presented, uh, I have a little problem with. There's no inherent wrong in acknowledging differing and opposing views. But there may be, if the disagreement is marked by misinformation or missing information. I'm very serious about Penland's recognition. I'd be very, I believe very strongly that the historical truth of Lower Guinean Township be recognized and inclusive. Because for well over 100 years, a successful African-American community resided in Penland Village. And the history of this relevant segment of Lower Guinean Township should not and cannot be erased. So I don't believe that any hurry-up solutions be made at this time. We did have a previous historic committee in which I was on some time ago. It was chaired by the late Herb Levy, who had some validity of recognizing period architecture. And we had discussed at that time that perhaps Penland Village itself could be listed as a historic district. However, for some reason, the historic committee stopped meeting and the board did not follow through on it. And there was some talk in the community that if it became a historic district, that it would, um, kind of affect their property and how it was being used. So I am very, uh, it's very important to me that whatever is done about this be valid and well researched. And I understand that you will be having historic committee. And I think that is the time when this should be discussed because I certainly do not want Penland Village to be erased from the history of Lower Guinean Township. It's been a very serious thing. And we have talked with other, for over two years, we talked with some of the other board members and people who are running for election, that Penland be recognized and that valid historic signs be erected in Penland. So that's how I feel about it. This is not something new with us. This has been going on for quite a long time. And I think that, uh, Penland or Lower Guiney should have the opportunity of having its own historic committee looking into this matter and working on it. And I thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. That is the intention of, of this board as far as forming a historic committee. We're not making any rush decisions. We're going to leave it to the historical committee to make recommendations to the entire board.
Hello?
I thank you. I thank you for those comments.
Hello?
Oh, can you hear us? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. My phone was ringing. But I, I, I can hear you. And I, I'm very, uh, serious. I think we should work and get more information from the total, uh, community. I think it's very important. And some time ago, I promised some of the, uh, older members of our community and our older generations that I would do everything in my power to see that Penland Village, uh, had a place in Lower Guinean Township's history.
Absolutely. Thank you for your comments. Are there any additional comments or from the public? No. Okay, so before we move forward, there's, there is, there's a, a quick demonstration that we're going to do regarding, I guess, the update to our website as it relates to the ability to pay taxes tomorrow, which is March 1st. Tax bills will be released. I know it's a joyous time for all. But our, our new tax collector has made it accessible and a little bit easier to pay tax payments or your tax bills online. So I think Jamie's going to walk us through how to access the ability to pay that online from the township website and the ease through which you can do so. So you go to the homepage.
You start here and then you go to departments, to finance, and then on, right here on the right-hand side, taxes.
Okay.
When you click on that, it brings you to the tax collector page.
So the tax collecting has an entire page and I think there's a big green button where it says.
What does it say?
Pay your real estate tax electronically.
Yeah.
Is there a button for someone else to pay your real estate?
So if you want to go, you go to our homepage, go to departments, go to tax or finance, and then on the right-hand side is tax. And then you're coming to this green button that's going to bring you to this page. So it's a simple online form, but I know that there's always hesitation about paying things online. I think the advantage of this is that it is secure. It is encrypted, so you can enter in your parcel number or do a search. And then you enter owner and your address and then you confirm information as well as how you want to pay. You enter in your first and last name as it relates to the billing information and your credit card number, so forth and so on. Um, it only charges you 50 cents to pay this online and you do get an immediate receipt. And our tax collector is on the call, but I, from my conversation with her, just briefly, she indicated that if you do this online and get an electronic receipt, she does have the ability to print additional receipts for you at no charge. Um, so you're going to pay 50 cents, you're going to get your receipt immediately and then you can get additional receipts just by, because of the fact that you did this electronically. It doesn't negate the fact that you can pay the traditional way. Or you can go in person or you can mail, but this is just another added convenience that's just recently been updated as far as the ability to pay online. So if you have any questions or concerns, I think when you go to departments and you go to finance, under finance is the tax collectors portion of our webpage. Contact information as well as an email address and a telephone number are listed. But this is just an added service that's recently been added. So you're going to departments, going to finance, going to taxes along the right-hand side. And there you go. So there's kind of, there's information as far as the address to pay your taxes, the telephone number, email address, and the ability to pay it online. Is there any additional questions from the board of supervisors? This is just a quick tutorial so that everybody knows that this does exist, knowing that tax bills will be going out tomorrow or should probably be hitting your. Yeah, you're probably getting it tomorrow.
Danielle, can I just say one quick thing? It's Natalie.
Absolutely. Absolutely, go ahead, Danielle.
50 cents for the e-check, but it's 2% if you pay it with a credit card.
Okay. So if you play for, if you use a check online where you put in your routing and your bank account and information, it's 50 cents. But if you use your credit card, you're going to get charged 2%.
Correct. And when, when you do do it, please make sure to click the yes button there. You're paying your county and your township. People had some problems this weekend. And when you do go into the search, it's your last eight digits with no dashes.
So where are you saying the last eight digits with no dashes of your parcel?
You have to go hit the blue button.
Of the search.
Yeah, the search blue button. And that is your last eight digits with no dashes.
No dashes.
And then it will automatically auto-fill with your name and your address.
Gotcha.
And how much you are going to pay. And it'll automatically do the discount.
Okay. So we currently are, go ahead.
That's it.
Okay. So I know, we know that this is recorded. We're kind of doing this as a service so that if, if you, you know, can go back and look online later, you can see somebody walk you through about what it looks like to pay it online. If there's any questions, you can reach out to Natalie directly.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Just a, before we go to the manager's report, I know that last- Just before we go to the managers' report, I know that last, oh, no, it's not last. There's like probably three meetings ago, there was a question from someone in the public around Worcester Road and concerns related to the traffic and the traffic patterns, and I think we were waiting for some information from the county before we could update it. So Chad, are you able to answer?
We were able to talk with County Roads and Bridges Department since that meeting recently about the concerns out at the intersection. They agree and understand the concerns that were expressed out there. I think one of the possible solutions that was thrown out and by the resident and the public comment period pertained possibly putting in a multiway stop control at the intersection or potentially other improvements. You know, similar to other instances on county roads in the past. Any type of new traffic control or changes to existing traffic control. Those have to be adopted by ordinance by the township and enforced by the township. And therefore, the county's policy is that the traffic study that's required to establish any warrants for changes in traffic control must be completed by the township at their expense for the county's review. So if the township would like to move forward, they would certainly entertain, you know, a study completed by the township and any recommendations made. We are currently in the process of preparing a proposal for the board's consideration at your first meeting in March to conduct that study and engage the County Roads and Bridges Department further.
Okay, thank you so much for that update. I appreciate it. Any questions from the board? Onto the managers' report.
Well, at eight fifty-five, I don't have much. I just want to acknowledge Ken Bright's longtime contribution to Lower Gwinnett Township. Chief Bright passed away last week, so he had almost forty years of service here to Lower Gwinnett Township and yeah, just acknowledged his life and his contribution to Lower Gwinnett.
Thank you. Is there, well, I guess we'll start with the supervisor comments. Tessie?
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Kathleen?
I just have a question. Are we back to Tuesdays for March, or are we continuing with our Mondays any longer?
Mondays through March.
Through March.
What it's through March. So you guys are still hanging in there?
No, no.
No, we're not. We didn't.
But I think we, what we advertised was through March.
Yeah.
Yes.
We were trying to ambitious with their process.
Thank you.
Thank you. They are out of there. If they did. Janine?
No, nothing. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Mike?
No comments. Thank you.
I just want to say that we're gonna do better with our time moving forward. I blame Craig, but. Thank you guys.
You just have so much to do.
I think, I thank you guys all for coming out. I thank everybody for participating and joining online.
Can I? Hey, before we go, this is Lynn Smith, five oh seven Hobby Horse, when that tax collecting and doing it online.
Yes.
I hope it's clearly marked that if you pay by credit card, you get charged two percent, because I would hate to see somebody get charged that fee and not realize it.
I do believe it is identified.
Hope it's like, I hope it's like bold and you can't miss it. You know?
I don't know how bold it is, but I thank you for that feedback, and we will pass that along. Thank you.
Yeah.
So I thank you so much for everybody that participated. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Danielle, what, what two percent?